There, you and everybody, it's about three fifteen. I want to welcome everybody to this Regis Hall. Workshop for the Temple City Council for Thursday, September fourth, twenty twenty five. First item is to receive public comments, and I believe we have Mr. Lidle virtually.
Yes, sir, you do. Yes, sir. How are you? I'm fine, thank you. Let me first apologize for last Thursday. I left in the middle of the meeting. Which was probably a better idea than disrupting the whole meeting by fainting on you. Apparently, I'm not as recovered as I thought. But the reason I wanted to visit with you this afternoon and not counsel. Is for the past week, I have been watching off and on Channel twenty five news and have seen considerable. Backtalk, I guess is the best word I can come up with, about the tax raise and about the city budget. I don't remember seeing Channel twenty five there. I don't remember seeing Channel twenty five at any of the other meetings. Or the people they've been talking to at that meeting or at any of the other meetings. So apparently, some of the, some of your citizens have decided late that they're going to complain about the taxes. Of course, we always do have that since institutions happen. But I just wanted to let you know that I've been watching it and I'm very unhappy with Channel twenty five and their coverage. And I hope tonight doesn't turn out to be too bad, but I suspect you'll be a lot of we'll actually get a lot more participation than tonight, I think, than we ever get all year long. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Alan. All right, next item is. Next items is to discuss any regular meeting agenda items for tonight's meeting. I'm going to read in on the consent, item five A D. I'm gonna read all that in. And then I'll call for a vote on so five A D is the employee benefits. So basically, I'm gonna abstain from out of A. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna read in the whole thing. I'll take a motion for approval on B through E. So everything except the medicals. And then Mayor Pro Tim will then basically just call for a vote on item A D A. Keep going, I did the same thing. Get to Z, get to Z and then. I did the same thing a minute ago. Yeah, well, this is the, this is the big consent agenda you hear now that we know what money we're gonna have. That makes sense?
Yeah, A D makes sense.
Which one am I doing in?
A D, then item A under A D. I'm gonna, I'll read it in, I'll call for a vote on B through E, and then just you'll call for a vote on A.
It'll be one motion.
Yeah.
Then A will be a different.
Yeah. Yes, sir. So outside of that, you know, for staff, anything else you can be told? Discuss right now, anything? Very good? All right. Staff, everybody good on staff? I'm sorry, I was just looking at California staff is good on consent? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, on the whole agenda. I just want to finish up the.
Thing else.
Anything else to be told? Everybody good? It's Chandler.
Good afternoon, council, staff members of the public. So we've got start with the two annexations, so I've getting a very quick update on these, starting with a section of spur F N ninety-three. And so this one is really cleaned up by request of the county. Adjacent to previous annexation, and so makes sense and back work. Typically, this is done, so just clean up. Just over seven acres, you can see the next F N ninety-three. I guess spur technically, that's why it's called spur.
We already have where the arrows at that part up there, we just didn't have the street annex, is that a road, is that what?
Well, we have to the south. That's right, so that's. A metal lady. Future development, which would also extend across all Allen and Bud.
Mike, I know colors aren't always the best way, but on the, on the map to the left, what's in white is in the city limits currently, and what's in yellow is not. So the spur is the northern, but what you're being asked to consider tonight is the northern part of a parcel that is in the city. But the, the part north of that is not yet. Or is not, that it would, it would only come in through voluntary annexation if, if the property.
Just an annex to speak.
That's right. Thank you, Brian, for that. And so, of course, if these folks do want to annex, then that continuity is necessary anyway, so it does open up future opportunities for voluntary annexation. Uh, let's see, sorry, can you pull up the zoning summary? There you go. Sorry, sorry, I shouldn't believe that. We want to talk about it. All right. And then much larger annexation, future data center. Representatives of, of the developer are here. If there's any questions. But this is, of course, the zoning case will follow immediately after the words here, the seven hundred and six acres. Uh, keep in mind that right now, this request only includes the adjacent Bob White Road sections. But Christina, the case manager, has been working with Judge Blackburn to accommodate their request, which makes a ton of sense, to also include the other kind of gaps, so we don't have a section of Bill County Maintain, City Maintain, Bill County Maintain. So that would move forward separately in the future. And then, of course, the accompanying zoning. And of course, this is seven hundred and two acres difference, of course, is Bob White Broadway. And so here's, here's the site plan, and we've been working very closely uh, with the Rowan Group and their representatives to make sure that the city gets the protections that they need, and I'll show you then what those planned development conditions are, but of course, that the developer gets the flexibility they need at this stage of the design. Will be able to bring up a project like this to our community. And so two of the items of flexibility that we'll discuss are related to access points shown on this site plan. They, they reached out to us yesterday to say, hey, they may want a little more flexibility. On those are shown on the map, and so I'll bring that to your attention for your discussion later, or uh, or defer to second reading, depending on your preference. But here, here are the conditions. And we've had weekly meetings through Bryn's office, and we've been able to participate those with the developer to just have check ins and make sure that we're on the same page. And for the most part, we are, there are just some questions of nuances that they want consideration of. Uh, you know, mentioning access, but right now what we have in the conditions that the final access design will be addressed during the plating stage, so not, not now. And certainly with coordination with Fire Marshal, just to ensure, because this is as, as you all recall, data centers, they are not big traffic generators. So I think we're looking at probably fifty to a hundred employees. But the additional access is less about the number of people coming in and out, and more about emergency access to ensure that uh, in, in the time of need, that the vehicles can easily get to put out the fire, or whatever the case may be. So others, you know, landscaping and screening from residential noise mitigation. And I think we're all very aware of the other data center in East Temple and some of the noise issues. They're very aware of that, are very willing to address those, and so with a noise mitigation study and just having that language within there to say, hey, the seventy-five decibel level that is our current limit, that's, that doesn't really address it. Now, given these buildings will be much further away from residential, you have seven hundred and six acre site. But just making sure that there's a little bit more attention to that and bringing it below kind of that very basic level, which is inadequate if you live near seventy-five decibels.
Right, wasn't that different, like that was the Bitcoin that was louder, correct? And that's no longer there, so does, do data centers have that much noise, is that?
Uh, so some, some of them do, and it depends on, I think, the technology cooling tower. So that project, it was cooling towers. I don't know if this is the same. It doesn't sound like this would be exactly the same. Um, but the, the cooling towers themselves are running, and they're, they're just by their very nature, runs all the time, and it's the frequency kind of this higher pitch. It's, so it's not even just the decibel levels, it's kind of a pitch of it. So, uh, yeah, this is supposed to be different, but once again, you know, with that noise mitigation.
Typical concerns related to data center and noise are it impacts include the type of cooling technology that is used, and if evaporative cooling with, you know, cooling towers, where they're located. Uh, if they're located on top of the data center, they cause more noise because it just has a greater reach. Um, the, uh, the facility that's near this proposed one, uh, which is no longer operational, but it had the cooling towers directly adjacent to the road nearest the closest residence, so that also contributed. So things like where you place, what, first of all, what technology you use for the cooling can mitigate noise dramatically. Where you place the cooling towers and tech, or the cooling technology in terms of orientation on the building and also on the site. Um, and then screening or buffering, but you know, either solid or vegetative can help reduce that. And as Brian said, it's not just decibel level, but it's just the constant nature of it. And then the other, the other area that tends to, that can be a little bit loud is the backup generators that are normally incorporated as part of these facilities. Um, and of course, those are traditionally only used during power loss, so that's not a long-term noise issue, uh, but just making sure that, um, during weekly or monthly testing, that that's coordinated, so that's done not, you know, uh, in the middle of the night or early in the morning and just, and maybe not all at the same time. Um, things like that can help reduce the noise that is generated from the facility.
I was watching a sixty minutes um, article thing the other day that, um, I think it was a data center in Virginia, and it was next to a farm. And because of the noise, the cattle quit producing, the chickens quit producing, I mean, everything, the the light, yeah, yeah, I think it was just, it was a lot, so, um, I'm glad that we're.
And also what type of, of data center, like if it's a Bitcoin mining versus not can.
And this was Bitcoin.
That's the worst, which is what the old facility was.
If you want to see what is not accepted, go to the old roads at, because like Ms. Meyer said, you, you back, there may be eight or nine of them down the side of the building that are easily within my thirty to forty yards of the road, they're substantial.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, you know, if, if, if you're looking for something about, no, you want to see it, that's it.
The one.
It's a mess.
But should the noise mitigation, instead of just saying the results indicate decibel levels exceeding an undesirable level, to your point, it's could be not investable ladder level reaching that. I, but do we, should we address that in that role?
Yeah, that's a good consideration, just to just ensure that it doesn't become the example the mayor prefers.
That'd be frequency, wouldn't it?
Yes. And, and that's something we're, we're taking note of for U D C amendments, you know, just lessons learned, but in terms of hey, that's something that can be addressed. And I would think in the study to evaluate that, hey, these are acoustic engineers, they are able to address frequency as well.
Yeah, because I think we could just add the decibel levels exceeding an undesirable level, taking into account relevant factors such as hours of operation, continuity of operations. You know, level of just making it clear that it's taking into account all of the operations.
Other noise factors.
Not just what's the number on.
We can move this through tonight and get more details in a couple of weeks for second reading on.
Uh, second reading, so, you know, we can, we can have discussion about these items, and if you're ready, then great, take action uh, tonight on, on those differences, you know, I'll change that slide uh, for this evening. For Kathy's guidance, but anything else that we discuss as well, if you're, if you're ready tonight, great, if not. We can defer probably those items from that second reading.
So will this ultimately will the, will it be a plan development that'll come to us?
This is.
And, yeah.
Yes, sir. So this is a plan development, light industrial, so P D O I.
Yeah, so we, you know, we visited out there, some of this one of their ongoing construction sites last week, and one thing that they did talk about was you know, the location of the cooling towers. I don't know that in this one, in this one, that they've decided on technology, but I think the technology probably now sell insurance, I say all the time, right? So I know. Um, but I think the, I think the technol, the cooling technology is, plays a very large factor. So, um. It'll be interesting, but it, we very much, I think, obviously, we look to this be a P D, so we can have really good conversations about.
That's right.
Set expectations.
Absolutely. And that also includes outer loop alignment. Go back. You can see this red line is the current thoroughfare plan alignment for the east outer loop. And so obviously, that's an important discussion for how this property develops. Uh, they've been very agreeable, you know, in terms of you know, agreeing to flexibility for us, but also recognizing that we, we need to be you know, fair as well in terms of if the alignment were to change, to not bisect their project, so you know, just trying to get the certainty they need and give you all the public uh, protection that's needed to make this a good project. So, yeah, that alignment can be addressed during plating process. Requiring utility services agreement, and these are things that we're also working on with the code, code updates. Uh, actually, this will be a minor, sort of minor code amendments, they would not wait for the overall, you'd see the, on a list of a industrial projects requiring a utility services agreement just to evaluate energy consumption, water, water consumption, uh, on the, the front end. So that's part of what they're entered into, and that would also address any potential damage that the project would inflict on public infrastructure, just to ensure that it's clear that they will be responsible for replacing or repairing. Rideaway dedication, and this is, we'll, we'll spend a little bit more time uh, on that in a second, but they're, they're agreeable to dedicating the rideaway for the east outer loop once that alignment has been uh, confirmed with a thoroughfare plan in the future. And then last condition, that as long as they plat all seven hundred and two acres, they wouldn't have to go through that extra step of it. And then a final. And we're, we're fighting that, and as long as there, you know, there aren't hundred lots, maximum of five lots. But as long as we can see the entire picture of how everything would work together. We're, we're fine with the final, you know, no need to take that extra step and have all the same agenda. To show us everything. So that's, that's what they requested, because our code, if we're working on uh, this and the U D C updates too, is, you know, that, that makes sense, we're gonna finalize all of it. But right now in our code, it says hundred acres, if it's hundred acres or more, part of the preliminary plan. Why? That's a kind of an arbitrary term, it just seems like that's a, that's a round number, hey, let's just make it a hundred. All right, so last night, the applicant requested consideration for two of those conditions, some revision. The one presented, we can discuss, and if you all want, or we can bring this back in two weeks. But I wanted to share this with you, that right now, the outer loop alignment, number five, you know, the language just states the applicant shall coordinate his staff to accommodate the outer loop alignment during the plating process, and will be addressed through thoroughfare plan in its future, if needed. Hey, if the current alignment works, no thoroughfare plan isn't, is needed. They would, they would like to see the language stated as based on the city of Temple Conference Plan, which is a thoroughfare plan. Major material to the property is shown on the P D site plan. The final alignment will be determined by the city of Temple through planning and engineering, collaborating with property owner, and that the design will be incorporated accordingly, provided there are no substantial deviations from the location shown. So understand the why, just question of substantial, what does that mean? I mean, I would suspect that they just want to make sure that the broker plan does not show the outer loop going through the middle of the property. But if that's, if that were to be a change, to say, hey, we're moving to Bob White, that's probably a substantial change, so that language really deserves a little bit more discussion. And we can discuss now, or I can go to the next item and discuss both of them, or say, hey, let's let's give this more of a thought. All right, so I'll just go on to the second one. And this is related to access points. As, as I mentioned on site plan, you know, it shows two very specific locations along Bob White. Uh, and so they, they are requesting just to have additional flexibility at this stage, because remember, this is early stage in the design. That they, they would like the language to state a minimum of one access point be provided along Bob White Road, these preferred locations, alternate locations to coordinate the city. So my, my follow-up is that while the condition related to access, that, that we looked at those eight conditions really defers it to the plating process, says final access design shall be determined in coordination with Fire Marshal through the plating process. But the site plan does show those specific locations on Bob White, so yeah, so I'm suggesting that we just clarify that those two access points shown are conceptual, will be confirmed at plating in coordination, Fire Marshal, just to, just to suggest that, hey, those, those points may change. But ultimately, and I don't want to speak for Landy, but I think during the process, the concern from fire would be, hey, a single access point is going to cut it. So, and additionally, a additional option would be saying that the applicant will provide a minimum of two access points to public roads with at least one along Bob White Road. So future outer loop could be a connection there. That, that means perhaps Tower Road or one of the, you know, might require getting an easement. But there are other options out there that certain their project, the scope could consider. So, um, yeah, those are, those are the two, and, uh, so just from my perspective, it looked like that has really been addressed, but they see those two points on the site plan and don't want to be bound to them right now at this stage of the design process.
So right now, the two points would be, could be on Bob White?
Yes, sir. And so they're, they're shown at, at specific locations along.
And then depending on the ultimate alignment of the outer loop, does it make sense to add language to require access from the outer loop?
I mean, it, at this stage, probably not, just because we, you know, we want to, we want to have, I mean, as a potential freeway, you know, depending on whether that's signalized or not, you know, for us to also kind of paint ourselves into a corner to say, yeah, we want to ensure that there is access, if they're not asking for it. You know, we want to have more control over where those access points are onto what could be potential freeway, limited access freeway. So uh, it, it may, I mean, one way or another, they're not to meet code. They're, they're not asking for an exception from the code, they're really just asking for an exception from that site plan.
Okay.
I mean, so it, it could just be a matter of, hey, um, we're not going to specify where those access points are.
Okay.
But we're going to work with the Fire Marshal at the plating stage, which is what that condition essentially says anyway.
And that, that was my thought was around public safety.
Yeah.
But the thought is, is who on Bob White? Satisfied? Not just the law, but also, you know, the, the intent, rather of giving safety apparatus here as quickly as possible.
Right.
And that was my only thought.
Sure, very, very question.
Don't want to acquire a bunch of extra expense or work unnecessary.
Any additional thoughts on those two requests yet? Because that's, that's the last slide I have on the Rowan project. And I'll, I'll present it the same way, unless, unless I hear otherwise from you all, regular agenda.
Al, anything else for Mr. Chandler?
Okay. All right, and then, uh, so going from a very large P D to a C U P on point one-six acres, uh, a alcohol and drug education services, essentially a substance abuse treatment facility. Uh, we'll have some discussion about that, that's on one eighteen South Twenty-Fifth Street. And I know we're all familiar with this location, it's been vacant a while, it's been, uh, a variety of different uses, but probably been vacant for a couple of years now. That's at the, the corner of West Avenue B and Twenty-Fifth. So now, if you, if the map wasn't clicking with you, this building probably is, pop right. And so if point one-six acres, it is some general retail, and actually, this cut off, but let me, let me go straight to substance abuse treatment facility. So even though this would be an outpatient facility, so no overnight residents, no medications given, it's really just counseling and therapy. But the way our substance abuse treatment facility definition reads uh, in, it, it's honestly somewhat problematic, because it treats a, you know, substance abuse treatment differently than any other counseling facility, this is essentially a counseling facility. But our definition does read outpatient or residential facility that offers treatment for persons with chemical dependency and operates such facility under a state license. And I forget what, or faith-based organization, so this checks all the boxes, it is outpatient. It is a facility for the treatment of persons with chemical dependency, and it, it would have a state license to operate. So that's, that's why this is classified as it is and requires a C U P. Here's the site plan, existing building, and really what I want to point out is that only twelve parking spaces are required, they're actually showing fourteen. And those last two at the corner are problematic anyway, just in case you've got people pulling, backing into Avenue B, especially if someone is coming south on Twenty-Fifth, taking a right-hand turn if someone is pulling out. Keep in mind, those are existing parking spaces, but what we're trying to do is make. Keep in mind, those are existing parking spaces, but what we're trying to do is make it better. And so they would have to get a street use license for that in the future. So that would come forward presumably with a future consent agenda. But with, with that site plan, that those last two spaces would go, so they would just paint those. And so the neighbors, they clearly didn't like the idea of a substance abuse treatment center. Uh, I know the applicant answered a lot of the questions, the counselor, you know, just to. Uh, explain to them what, you know, how this would work. It's, you know, normal office hours. There aren't going to be people, um, just loitering and I mean, it's, so. Just be like any other council, counseling center. But. There was one in agreement and those, a business across the street and then five in disagreement. We can see. Where those are located and that is a twelve percent disagreement. So. Doesn't get to the twenty percent that would trigger a super majority.
It's unfortunate that it's called a treatment center instead of a counseling center. I think that probably has a lot to do with the disagreement.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And so we are, we're looking at that in terms of probably, you know, having perhaps. At least one other category, our land use table that, um, were something like this. Or just clarifying, hey, this is, this is a counseling center. But right now unfortunately, it's just, hey, checks those boxes. We want to err on the side of, you know, conservative interpretation can say, hey. You know, let's, let, let's bring this forward and hopefully once everyone's educated, they realize that, okay, this is. Not something to be concerned about, but otherwise would have been approved by right. So we have a conversation in our, in our U D C stuff. We just dropped the word.
Uh, substance abuse on this.
Right. Just sure. That's.
Counseling center.
That's, that's one way to do it. Counseling center, so.
Right. You talk about, uh, during regular business hours, they won't do any counseling in the evenings.
Uh, evenings, yes, but I want to say Christina, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe no later than six.
No later than six, it's what he said. He took it last, uh, five around four, four thirty. It will be available at the council.
Okay. Yes. Thank you for that. So here are the conditions. I mean, nothing. Uh, other than that we hadn't discussed really, you know. Installation of planer boxes. And so they would add some additional landscaping. There are some large trees on the side they're preserving, you know, preserving. Um, repairing and resurfacing existing parking lot. So. Overall, taking this vacant building and improving it and having, you know, a, a. Use that benefits the community. I mean, that we're on board. And then last one, so we're going to even smaller, uh, plan development. Or a, an accessory dwelling unit at seven oh nine South thirteenth Street. And so here you can see it's, uh, it's close to Avenue G. It's on the east side of thirteen. And Christina is the case manager for this one. She's really busy at P M Z. Done a great job. What I think is really exciting about this is this, this could potentially be the first. Constructed love where you build, city approved plan set. Uh, and so. Aaron and Christina have been working really hard on these plans, but also the overlays that would allow these for some conditions. To avoid future plan developments in appropriate locations. But so the applicant has agreed to use what is, we're labeling the Hawthorne. Uh, four hundred and forty square feet, you know, single story. So, uh, very small, one bedroom, one bath. And it would be located in the backyard, meeting your setback requirements, also with alley access. And of course, there are conditions associated with it as well, just ensuring that they have adequate parking. So not just the two parking spaces for the existing home, but two additional ones for, uh, the A D U accessory dwelling unit. Um, the alley access that we talked about. But the one I really want to point out is number eight. There is an existing fence. And just to ensure for public safety, that there's a gate in that fence. You know, if, if that A D U ever were, uh, to, you know. To go up in flames, then it, then at least the fire department has, uh, as the hose lays has a, has direct access to the backyard. So that's what that requirement is about. That is all that I have. Any questions on that or any of the other cases?
I have a question. Christina, is the Hawthorne plan set comparable to the existing home? Is it, does it look like it's something similar?
Uh, yes ma'am, it, it does. It, it matches in character. It doesn't necessarily match in, in the color palette, but in character, yes ma'am.
Did they say they, they wanted to rent it or is it family member? Just curious.
Uh, the owners actually.
Oh, hi, hi.
Yeah, the, the plan would be to rent it.
Okay. Well, I'm excited that we're finally using the love where you build sets. That's, that's nice to see those finally get dusted off. I know Aaron put a lot of work into that, so. Christine, thank you. We appreciate you guys.
Alright.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Alright, next item is to receive a presentation from Designing Local Limited regarding the art, the cultural master plan. This is me.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um. But I just wanted to introduce this. Uh, we, you all have these, um, on, on the table. This is our final draft of the arts and culture master plan. We started watching the designing local, I would say, a little over a year ago. And we had a pretty expensive process. Um, it was a lot of trouble and engagement and work for this to find out. Um, information from the arts, the major cultural community as well as our residents. And so I. We did a community wide survey where we had over seven hundred survey responses, by far. More than I've seen in a lot of other plans that I've completed. Uh, we had a steering committee that we had along the way. That's really a big part of that. Appreciate your help, um, as well as other arts and cultural organizations and community members. And then a lot of one-on-one interviews and focus groups. And so Meredith really ran that. In addition to this, we also did building discussions. So you'll see that a little bit in the presentation today as well. Um, that, and that would be on pretty a temple bill. You know, we might just be in the center and, and various other places. So anyway, um, here we are today and love to get your feedback and.
Hey, Karen. Uh, and thanks to everyone who's participating in the process and I heard you, of course, are here today. That and for the time today as well. Uh, I'm just going to go over very briefly, um, what the regulations are of the plan. There's obviously a lot more context, but if you have questions, just interrupt and double over for those, um, as we go. Um, this is a lot of words for the vision, just to basically say that we want Temple to be an irresistible draw. Um, for, for folks to come spend their money, enjoy themselves, um, see all that Temple has to offer. Um, but also to really honor the people who are here, the heritage of the folks that have been here. Um, and make everyone just really pleased to spend their time in this special place, right? Uh, so the city of Temple's goal in that is just to provide some support to facilitate, uh, vision. Um, and make sure that meaningfully impacts especially the people who are here. But again, everyone's. Right? So what we did is basically put four big ideas into the plans, basically to start by to say like, here are the topics of general things that we want to accomplish. Uh, we'll keep what our, uh, open. Uh, and so I'll just dive right into the first of those, just kind of the biggest of them. Um, and that is to create a cultural district in downtown Temple. Um, so the topics within this section, we had to establish and administer a cultural district. Um, what are the boundaries with staffing look like? What's the funding mechanism? Um, how to develop and invest in the facilities that would be within that cultural district ideally. Um, and then what kinds of public art would be, um, just, you know, some visionary ideas for all of that. Right? Um, so to start off the administration, um. Step back, what even is a cultural district, right? Uh, so the state of Texas through its commission on arts has a designation program that. Um, identifies different cultural districts, right? So key word with this is that it's a designation program, that is a developmental program. So, um, they honor with this designation, places that already have a cultural district that's thriving, that's attracting tourists. That's making money, that's really generating enough energy with it really. Um, and so this is perhaps a biennial project to get Temple to that place, right? But, uh, you'd be working with the state throughout that period of time to make sure you're kind of hitting the, the markers of the, the metrics required, right? Um, it is a defined area of high concentration of arts and cultural facilities, art, artists events, lots going on all the time. Um, of course primarily it's an economic development tool. So you're marketed among all the other ones in the state of Texas. Um, you know, you're promoted through your own channels as a physical district. Uh, and it's just alerting people to the fact that like, this is something that you prioritize, that you care about, and that there are options here for that to be experienced. Uh, and then, uh, it is a way to access the special funding that the state has set aside for such districts. So some of those can be very substantial grants, right? I mean, this is hundreds of thousands of dollars to renovate your theaters, um, to, you know. Develop marketing campaigns, to do, uh, pedestrian rates, those sorts of things. Um, so it is, uh, once you become designated, something that can really benefit the community financially. So how did, how do you define the district? Well, it needs to be a contiguous area. So you're not going to have a vast expanse of land. Where people are having to walk or maybe perhaps they can't walk because there's no sidewalks. Um, from place to place and there's just like nothing happening, right? It has to have active space. Um, but the, the types of amenities within that space are, are many, right? So you might have public art, but also restaurants, hotels, performance venues, cultural arts center, galleries, historic landmarks. Um, artists live workspaces, parks, civic infrastructure, all of that, right? It's just been activated. The space is activated and you can walk from place to place within that space. So typically, of course, you're going to have those spaces downtown. Um, and that's what we've done here. We kind of identified like, here's some, uh, cultural memories that are already existing in downtown. The gray spots are the city owned properties. And then based on that and what we can loosely plan for in the future, the short term future. This is what we recommend the boundaries to be. Um, you know, it's, it's a process that would probably have to have state council privileges. This is not like final version. You might, you know, negotiate different boundaries. Um, but the idea is that if there's not something that connects these amenities currently. That in the near term future, by the time that you're applying to be a cultural district. Something will be in the works that, that connects these things. So, um, so that's what we've got currently. Um, I should say, uh, I'm not getting into it deeply at this point, but what we have in the plan is that the city. Um, at least in the near term will be the entity that manages the cultural district. There are other models. Um, you could have an nonprofit do that. You could have a P I do that. Um, there's all kinds of different ways. But to get things rolling in the short term, again, we'll have the city within the communications, um, department that's to burn. Take on that task. Right? So, um, so that's how we got it out right now. Um, sort of the facilities. And this is something that I do throughout. It's just have an inspiration page. We can see what other places are doing. Um, so in this case on the left, got current conditions and then on the right, there's a, there's an inspiration. Right? And the, the big idea though is that we're going to try to have as many different facilities within Temple. Co-located in the downtown area. So, um, you know. Having C A C potentially moved downtown, building out M L K festival grounds to be our space that counts as a cultural identity. Um, hopefully keeping the children's center, children's, uh, museum downtown. Um, how do we keep all these things in a space that people can then enjoy multiple experiences within one visit, right? So, um, you know, cultural activity center, the, the, okay, there's sort of vast expanse of land, nothing else going on. There's no restaurants really. There's like, it's difficult to navigate them. They're so big that it's hard to find your way through them. Whereas here you've got a space that was formerly derelict, but it had been a thriving historic district. That building that you see here, that was a former, um, auto sales and repair space. Um, so our partner that came to the facilities assessment, D L R group, they came in and they helped create this whole neighborhood that was. Permanent space for a permanent stage and all sorts of facilities. Then there's a restaurant, there's an indoor theater as well. Um, lots of different types of spaces and you can see that it's become a huge community draw. Right? So that's the type of thing that we're trying to work towards here. Why downtown? Well, um, because once you're, you've got several things going on at once, of course, there's synergies that can occur between them. Whether you're sharing programming, um, maybe you've got some resource sharing that can happen, you know, parking lots, for example, can certain more than one facility. Um, you just get more potential for different, unique, exciting types of partnerships. Um, obviously anything that's a cultural identity in downtown facilitates. The cultural district in that application, that the, you know, a goal that we work towards that can help. Um, you can exploit existing infrastructures. You don't have a new build situation. There's lots of vacant lots downtown. There's vacant properties. There's existing facilities. So you can already have that kind of head start on that. Um, to bolster Temple's sense of identity. So having a bunch of. Facilities that come together to collectively say, this is Temple, this is our history, this is what we value as a community, this is who we are. The people can experience that sort of viscerally, viscerally in space and just know. And so you don't have to make a huge case for it. It's just what it is. This is who we are, right? It's very easily viewed to this. Uh, which I think people are creating from our feedback that we got from the nation. Um, and I will say, you know, it's not here, but there's an intangible, right? It's like downtown has like a, like a repository for the history of Temple. Um, you know, all the hundreds of years of people that have been in this place, right? And, and so trying to recreate that someone else is impossible. You just can't. There's the, the buildings that are here. There's the, the people, the railroads, the, the street grid itself, you know, everything speaks to who Temple has been. And so trying to like capitalize on that is something that I think, um, is important. Um, and then, and then, you know, obviously just maximizing the economic and cultural impact of these places, reinforcing the other performance as well. So hopefully we can get everyone downtown. Now, inspiration, right? So on the left, Santa Fe Plaza, of course, this is just over in Burleson. So, you know, it's a very, very similar space. You've just got a little bit more event infrastructure there. Right? Some of these improvements are not, are, you know, sort of building on what you've already done and, and what you've earned that is brilliant, right? This has got a little bit more substantial permanent stage. It's wired for major events. There's a permanent restroom with storage space, A V equipment, all that. Um, and then some gateway features here with that sign and the shade structure, um, and permanent lawn furniture. Boom. All of a sudden, Santa Fe Plaza can do a lot more than it currently is. So those are the types of things we're talking about. Likewise, Grand Rapids, as I was talking about before, right? If we keep the children's center, the children's, just say center, children's museum downtown. This museum in Grand Rapids, across from the park, quarter from the library. And on the same block as a painted alleyway that then is on a public art walk, right? So you've got a lot going on. And in fact, the museum and the library are working with the city to do some of those things that I was talking about. Shared programming, shared parking spaces, right? So, um, so keeping that energy all in one space is. Opening up new opportunities. Another thing that we've got in the plan has to do with artist spaces. So sometimes you don't, you don't have to work so hard, right? If you have artists there, they do their artist thing. They can, you know, so how do you facilitate a space that like actually invites those folks in? Um, you know, here's one opportunity. Art space is a firm that does this all over the country. In El Paso, they did a whole new deal, mixed use spaces. Um, they have one, two, and three bedroom apartments. They have co-working spaces for artists and then ground floors typically some sort of small business, right? Likewise, Galveston, this facility here is in historic structure, but it's been around twenty plus years. And there are artists that are still there, um, living and working to this day. A whole different models for you. Um, and then public art, um, these are just, I'll just do this quickly, but, um, just some ideas for inspiration. Over on the left, you've got the library there left, storybook room on the right. How do we get kids safely from one place to the next, right? Can we do some creative crosswalks that, that guide them from the parking lot over to this area? Um, the underpass, this is an example from, from my town, Columbus, Ohio, where they did a huge mural. And then it's illuminated various colored lights at night, right? So it makes it a space that seems kind of sketch to a place that's like really inviting and a transitional space that. That gets people wanting to go, you know, from the depot onward to the trail to the market. Which I saw on my walk after, and then Aaron and, and at for lunch and it's amazing. It's happening. I could say Temple's a place where things happening. It's happening. I could say Temple's a place where things are happening. You guys see action here, and it's really inspiring, even since I've been here. Or structures that you don't have ownership of, or you don't damage in some way. There's like video and art installation, or video and sound installations that you can project, and they don't do anything at all. So you can have all sorts of stories that are told about the community in that way. Parking garages that are massive campuses. So if you are concerned about, you know, oh gosh, like, this is our cultural district. There is a huge block that's being applied parking garage. Can we do something to that to make it an inviting space? They've got a whole program here. They've got different, different artists that paint their structures. That's like his grandma trying to peeking through blinds at her house or something. You know, it sounds like it's me so created. And then likewise, the silos right behind the market too would be a perfect place for it. This is in McKinney, and that was pretty recent, silo art, but if you Google silo art, it's unbelievable what these people can do. So.
Is that paint or rock?
It is paint. Unreal. I don't even understand. Like, I don't, I don't know. It's not my business, but. Yeah, if you can negotiate the ownership of it, this is like a magical thing, right? Right? So, so that's sort of what we're thinking about the cultural districts. Again, there's, there's lots of new ones to do, but you can read it, ask the questions, need to get more into it. But I'm talking about the, the, the public art program. Some of this is going to be really on the sexy work currently. That is just sort of the background infrastructure that needs to be established in order to make this art happen. And the first thing would be to create an art commission. These typically are official city council commissions that would have the responsibility for, you know, setting, doing artist selection processes, you know, working with the artists to develop their concepts, selecting the concepts, recommending to council what art should be invested in, and dealing with some of the contracting around that, right? So that's multiple of that role. And then the art policies would be in the appendix. So obviously your legal team would have to sort of evaluate what would work in, in this place. But we have lots of recommendations around maintenance for art, what counts as art, how can you use the funding for that? If a piece no longer works within the collection, how do you essential that in a way that's like a proper process? That hopefully avoids some of the, the controversy there, I think, and that protects artists' rights. So, so, you know, take a look at those and, and see what you want to adopt here. But it's trust me, better to have the policies than not to, because, you know, things can be very tricky. So to definitely look at that. We do have several funding mechanisms recommended in here. There's information for allocations from the general fund, setting up a Pid in downtown, setting aside a percentage of the RZ board funds. And then we went per of a percent for art program, which sets aside a percentage of capital improvement and budget items. Basically, if you were to say, build a new police station, one percent of that would go towards a public art fund. So we don't have that here, but we do have a recommendation that capital budgets would include a line item for public art, and that is at your discretion. So it's a little more flexible, I guess, is the point. But there is that mechanism in here. So those types of funds will go to funding the public art that you guys decide to. And then staffing, we do recommend one FTE for a public art coordinator because it is a surprisingly technical role. There's a lot of contracting and engineering that goes into some of these projects. So having somebody to kind of manage all of that, especially at the scale that hopefully you'll be implementing for art, is. So no, no fun pictures for that section, but it is a lot of nitty-gritty stuff. However, delivering arts and culture experiences, this, this covers art in places that's not downtown, right? Because it's obviously a very downtown-oriented plan, but there's lots of other folks in the city who want to see art, and have said that they'd like to see it in their hearts. So how do we do that? What types of arts and culture permitting will the city offer, what kinds of events, and how does this support those? And then revealing and presenting cool stories. So, so is everyone here who's lived here, who is currently living here, are they representative of what is out there in the community space? Just some examples. This is not a current condition on the left. This is actually a separate one. But, you know, this can be a community or a project where there's like fairy houses along the trail. And, and, and these were literally made during COVID times by families that just before. You know, I mean, it doesn't have to be a lot to, to make this happen. Whereas on the right, this is a Johnny Cash trail that has some significant Johnny Cash-related public art that is being installed over a period of several years. And that's just a segment of trail in Olson that they decided to eat that to go away. So there's some, some grander pieces, there's bigger, so there's lots of options. And then the skate park down on the left, that's like pretty bland space, sort of stood in the middle of nothing, like, and we make that a little more vibrant. And then Juneteenth, do a list of my relatives. These are described more so in the plan. But the point is not that the city actually deliver these types of permits, because they may not be appropriate for it, but other community groups that are seeking to do this type of thing that with support from the city could be doing some things that are like well added extra than, than what we've been able to do previously. So how does the city support that? Is there a package that can be created or sponsorship in kind of financial? So that folks can figure it on themselves to deliver the types of programs that they like. And I should say too, there's a little bit in here about having more art and cultural events through the arts department. So there's different types of workshops and classes need to be offered. There are obviously already some being offered, but people kind of form, Stacy does some that are very highly regarded. But they, people say like, we, we want more. We can't always fix it. We see, you know, we, you want cheaper options, whatever it is. Like people, there is a demand for more of that sort of thing. Another final one, the final idea is to nurture the level of creative community. There's two main thoughts here. Support the development of arts councils. And then I'll say quickly regarding this last point here, this is kind of pursuing small, high-impact ways of, again, for us frankly, it's just like, where do we put everything else? It's like, you know, the little stuff that like doesn't fit anywhere. And, and this would be the type of thing where it's like, okay, you know, you're doing city plans all the time in all different contexts, right, and topics. And so can we make sure that public art or cultural activities are factored into those plans? And it doesn't have to be just arts and culture themed, right? It could be, you know, a neighborhood plan. What would you like, if there's an opportunity for us to like have a mural somewhere? What would you like to see expressed? Or in a transportation phase, like, is there a roundabout where there's some lands that might feature a culture? Like, the local links could be factor that in, and perhaps even use transportation funding to make that happen. Like, there's all kinds of different ways, if you're creative, that all plans can factor in public art. I know that you do. I know. But, so that's kind of what that lesson does, but I'm gonna circle back to the, to the arts council, because that's sort of the thing, right? And, and just to say a little more about that, you know, people seem to get confused, commission versus council, like what is a council do, and what is that? So not always, but typically, an, an arts council would be a nonprofit that is escaped from a governmental unit, right? And they're gonna be a direct service organization that provides services of all kinds and tangible support to artists and arts organizations. So currently, of course, the city is in the role of giving out the money and doing a lot of the support, and it's, it's not appropriate. I wouldn't say it's not appropriate. It's just that it imbalanced our ecosystem. You've got multiple folks serving in these roles. And then it doesn't put the burden of any task onto one ST, right? So we want to have a nonprofit that's separate from the city that's in the business of serving artists and arts facilities. And what that might look like, and they're all different, is that they provide opportunities for networking, education, mentorship, professional development. They provide technical assistance, trainings, or, or actual services. They, they maybe compile lists of artists and public art, maybe they develop art walk experiences for folks, that sort of thing. They might do arts advocacy, making sure that the interests of artists and arts organizations are represented in partnership with the commission. They might collect friends and have data and reporting. You know, there's lots of national groups that are ranking different cities according to, you know, what's the economic impact of your arts community? Okay, well, the arts council could facilitate those types of data collection efforts. Likewise, if the cultural district needs to have some data collection happen, they can support those efforts, stuff like that. They'll often do centralized community arts calendar. I know that's always, in every single community I'm in, that's always a high interest. I am, is to have that centralized calendar where people can find out what's happening. They might manage that or promote the arts in other ways. And then, of course, the big one is the funding. So they're often a regrantor of federal, state, local arts funds. So in the case of this plan, what we've established is that the city would in fact flow some of its funding into an arts council. And then they can be the ones responsible, with the city's guidance, of course, for distributing those funds so that the, the city's kind of a little bit removed from that process and doesn't have to play favorites or receive its own biases and all that sort of thing, right? So, so, and of course, they can seek their own sources of funding so they can be applying for any grants or whatever grants are still available at a level, which of course is like always a little bit of a lux in these days. But, but the point being, like, they can draw money to develop, they're then distributing. So you've got a great model nearby. This is not precisely what will evolve in Temple because the circumstances of each community are different. The needs of the communities are different. They, Creative Eagle, for example, is far more involved in public art implementation than I imagine that the Temple folks would be. And there's probably other differences that will emerge as well. But they've been very successful, and they've really transformed we go over the past twenty years. And so there definitely is somebody to talk to, at least for some inspirations videos. So, of course, the city does not get to dictate how that all plays out. That would be a separate organization, but the intention would be hopefully that the city can support whatever does emerge organically from the community and the public space. So that's kind of the, the big picture. I know I glazed through it, but if there's any questions, happy to take those. Comments, of course, too.
Mention Waco. Do any, or, or other peer cities have cultural district?
Yes, there are maybe fifty, I think fifty-two or fifty-seven in Texas. And so, and, and in fact, like Houston has seven. Austin has at least a couple, Arlington, Texas, Salado. Waco. Many others. I don't even know them all, but I think there's a map in there of that on the, on the page there that you'll see. Yeah, Arlington is looking to develop its second, actually, and there's no limits, whereas there are that concentration of these, these communities.
Bryan, Georgetown.
Okay.
Salado, Waco. Oops.
Yeah.
I was just looking at some of our close by. Sometimes we consider peer cities, so it's definitely not just a big city thing.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, when you say Bryan and Georgetown, I can visualize. It does make sense.
Yeah.
And you mentioned twenty years, you know, I'm sure you can't answer it, but roughly, how long would you think something like this would take to get substantially built out? Twenty years, you could guess?
Or like the, the whole plan? And the ten-year plan? Yeah, and so that's kind of what I'm thinking in my head. But I mean, I think like by that point, again, you'll certainly be ready to apply for designation. I mean, I think some of these, and especially for the facilities, are already kind of in the works, and they'll take a while to, to build, obviously. But, I mean, again, Temple's the city of action. I mean, I, I say that to Aaron all the time, like, you guys move quickly and with intention. And, and so in some places, it would probably take longer than it will.
It's nice to see some of the stakeholders already doing some statues and stuff ahead of us. Bo Harvey was talking about implementing something.
That's right.
In his new location, what is.
At the Katy Room?
Friendly Tire, the old Friendly Tire.
Tire. And then I know in that triangle area, they've already put up, on the south side, on Thirty First Street. They've already added something there. So it's nice to see some of that just kind of regenerating.
I know, and that's the thing, it's been a little over a year, like she said, but I mean, I'm already seeing project being completed, started. Like, I mean, it's just, it, 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 the pace is really unique. I don't know how. I mean, maybe I, I see a lot of different communities in them.
You have faith in us.
I'm not scared to go about simple. I feel like you guys are already on it.
Funding something like some, funding for something like this, involving some challenge, I think you just have to be very.
Yeah, it's hard in this economy.
You build one thing, one, one percent of that cost, and you automatically.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's, you know, one of those things that, well, when, when there's a little bit left over. And there's never any left over.
Exactly. Arts and culture is scraps, but I mean, I think, if what I'm hearing is that true, Temple wants something more, you know, Temple doesn't want to be just a place where people have to come because their, their residency happens in place that their hospital, you know, it's like, or because they're stationed here for other, the military, you know. People here seem to want this to be a place that like really, you know, a draw and like it really expresses who you guys are, you know, and you just can't do that strictly through, you know, an economic development model. You know what I mean? Like, there's gotta be something here that feeds people. And so this is, this is the work, and yes, it does take investment. But I think it reaps our honor ultimately.
Can be your point about funding hotel and motel tax would be the potential source.
Well, that is, that is a good point. Actually, I didn't mention that, but it is already somewhat allocated to, to arts and culture, yes. I've recommended that it's increased because a big portion of that is historic preservation, you know, and, and that is still lived in and involved in the cultural district. But for the short term, to, I mean, facilitate an arts council, they'll need some support from helping. And so me, just, just directing a little bit more of the, to the arts, where I think a period of five years is recommended in arts. Not forever, but at least to get that. It wouldn't even be, it wouldn't represent the entirety of that time. It would be a, a higher.
Anything else? I'm from, I'm from Abilene, which is.
Yes.
That west. And around there, they have a downtown civic center, and around their civic center, they have a walking path that has like bronze statues that depict characters in stories. Like there's a Huck Finn, you know, and it's, it's means it's not full life size, but it's, it's pretty close. And it's, you can drive downtown and not there, and there's not a lot going on in downtown, Abilene and that. But there's always half a dozen people, you know, strolling through that. It's, it's really interesting and it just sort of adds another flavor to, you know, one more reason to come.
Yeah, you want it to be a kind of experience. Like, that's the thing about Stacy, you know, you, you go there. And then if you want to perhaps see anything else, it's, there's gotta be a high degree of intention for that, right? Whereas like, you want people to flow out of our performance and be like, oh, you know, I hear music walking from O'Brien's, let's just see what's going on there. And then like, what, you have punctuating experiences with public art, you know, the looking for like selfie station even, or like, you know, this. Even historical statues where you learn from, you know, those are the moments that really like made a place and people care about a place, they want to come back to it. And it's, it does require cultivation, you know, you get there.
Does. Pretty good. Now, something else on the free?
I did, I just wanted to mention that Aaron was the project manager from. I did, I just wanted to mention that, um, Erin was, um, the project manager from office on this. And she worked really hard on it. And then I do see some guests in the, in the audience today from our arts community who were very collaborative and worked really hard, um, to give us this input so we could have a consolidated plan that helps us move it forward. So thank you guys for being here to support it and for all the work that you did to, and I think Jessica, I think you were on our steering committee, so.
It's enjoyable.
Yeah, thank y'all for supporting this.
If you don't mind pointing everyone out from the community and, you know, let them introduce themselves or you introduce them to us? I think, I think we know most everybody, but just in case.
And then we have Annette Farmer here with the Civil Activity Center.
Very good.
And I needed point to say this, we had a steering committee that worked this long way and it was crucial. And Jessica was a great big part of that, um, so I was a very keen, so.
Very robust participation.
You always have an opinion.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. All right, next, Adam is to receive departmental updates. No, sorry, I'm reading wrong one. The senior presentation regarding this year twenty-six, uh, Temple Police Association meeting confer.
No, a lot of receptions today. So I'm just gonna go through this really quickly. We, we don't have too many updates for y'all. You know, we, we have did the meeting for process, um, working closely with the Temple Police Association. And just a quick overview of that, then chapter one thirty-two is what allows the police association to politician. Um, the request that the city recognize them as the association and she has the sole inclusive bar engagement for all officers. And that is through the week process. So, um, it allows us to meet and confer with police officers. Um, we probably have various different topics concerning A hours of work and other terms. So, um, those meetings are always open to the public, so we post an agenda and we meet at a So, a little bit about this, um, meeting for process, we started in December of last year. Um, where we, uh, looked at the civil service market study, that's when we began those discussions. And then, um, in February is when we adopted the ground rules. We began those extensive negotiations. In June, um, we had tentative agreements that were reached. Um, and, um, right now, uh, the TPA is currently voting. So, um, if they vote in approval, that will come to you all and we hope to have that on your September eighteenth agenda. A little bit about the team members. So it's broken out by city administration and the Temple Police Association. We have five members on the city administration team. Um, we all worked pretty hard together, um, a lot of work goes into that. Both teams. And then I don't want to forget the alternates either. Um, you can see that we have a list of six alternates for the city administration team. Um, we don't have a certain amount that's dictated, um, in our ground rules, so we're gonna have six on here. Um, Jess came on with us as, and Tammy, um, I think just started last year working, um, through that with us. This year starts to be ready and then on, and then the TPA has decided. So, um, again, you know, this allows us to communicate as well as collaborate, um, with one another uh, regarding employment issues, um, for our fiscal year twenty-six meeting for process. Um, we focused on compensation as well as some non-substantial cleanup of the agreement. Our current agreement currently has seventeen articles. Um, and we made substantive changes to one article and non-substantive to two articles. So if you haven't, um, did make a lot of changes this time around. So, um, I'm gonna go over those. Those are the articles that I show in blue there. So the first one is compensation. Um, just a quick overview of that, that is the one that, um, basically, um, we talked about that we will meet no later than January fifteenth. So the current agreement says meet no later than January fifteen, twenty twenty-five, to discuss the compensation study. So we did that, so I showed you all beginning in December. And so we'll be updating that to January fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven. When we do the next, um, civil service market study. Um, just one very minor change. So if y'all recall, um, we added the holiday payout pilot program last time when we completed the meeting confer process, um, you know, for that. And that allows for the officers to receive compensation for working a maximum of three city of Temple absurd holidays each year. Um, we did include a sunset clause that we would review it every two years. We did say that, that also that pilot program would be terminated once he reaches adequate staff, they have certified officers, informationary officers. I'm very happy to report that Chief, um, is, is, I think, fully staffed. However, there are a lot of officers that are still in training. So even though the numbers are showing that he's fully staffed, you know, um, there's a lot of officers in training right now. So, um, we'd like to continue with this, um, this holiday pilot program. The, uh, what we added to it is that we wanted, uh, we didn't have a deadline before to submit requests for payout. And so we wanted to determine that annually based on payroll date. So we included that language in here and that was the addition that we made. Um, and then also stating that once the request form is submitted, no changes could be made. Um, in regard to IBAP, nothing really substantial. If you recall, I think it was, um, last time. So we, we've extended the, the boundary, but the current geographical limitation is, uh, no more than forty-five minutes from the Temple Police Department headquarters, which is the same required and then the police officer has. So, um, anyone can take home their vehicle within that boundary. Um, we, um, had completed a, a fee of fifty dollars per paid period last time. So we are recommending increasing that from fifty dollars to sixty dollars per paid period. Um, and, and Tracy's team, Jess, and, uh, Melissa did a lot of work to determine um, what the cost is for the city and, and how we can make up a little bit for that. So we worked through that agreement and, and all agreed.
One pay period, two weeks.
Every paper, yes. Yes, we twice as papers a year.
Yes, a fortnight.
He's trying to bring him back.
And this is another simple one. Um, this is the physical fitness article. Um, basically what we did for here was we, um, had that when, in the current agreement that when an officer is performing a road test for their annual physical fitness exam, um, a paramedic or EMT would be, need to be there. That's not currently how it was being practiced and we agreed together that that is not necessary for that. That there are several officers there and if someone needed medical attention, um, you know, we have several officers that, um, who perform that and, and, um, be able to assist. So we are removing any reference to a paramedic or EMT, um, as well as, um, the sentence that you see there in the last bullet. So with that, um, just a, a quick reminder that the agreement would be enforceable and binding. Um, if you all read, if the, um, if the police association ratifies agreement by a majority vote, um, and then the city council agrees on that as well. So that will be on your agenda on September eighteenth. I do not have current numbers of the voting results typically. I do, um, the Temple Police Association to begin their voting last Friday. Um, as of, I think, late yesterday, they had several yeses and, and only a few no's. But, um, there were still a little bit over thirty people who still wanted to opportunity to vote. So they requested to extend that to tomorrow at seven P M. So we'll have those results, um, at your upcoming meeting. But it's looking like, uh, that will move forward. So as I stated, um, we will have a resolution on your agenda to ratify the meeting for agreement at your next council meeting. Um, and then we are proposing to instead do a two-year agreement, do a one-year agreement. So that would be, um, continuing to affect until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. And so we will be able to start negotiations. So, uh, right away.
Would you go back to the, the, um, automobile usage page? Increase the fee to sixty dollars per paid period for officers residing outside.
Right.
Um, so the officers, everyone has their own car.
Yes.
And everyone takes that car home. Right?
If they're within forty-five minutes.
They're allowed to, as long as they're within forty-five minutes. So if they live an hour out, they leave the car stationed or.
I think, isn't that required to be a police officer, you have to live?
So what is the, a couple of questions? I'm, well, one question, one, one's a statement. Um, there are no sort of, um, maintenance requirements, I'm assuming for an officer to maintain their own car. Cause it's not really, it's, it's a commuter, right? It's not a daily driver. The days that they're off, they're using their own car. Yeah. Okay. And then, um, the sixty dollars per paid period for officers residing outside of the city limits.
Right.
Explain that to me.
So if you live inside the city limits, you don't have a fee, right? So if you're in Temple proper city limits, you don't have a fee. Also, you do not have a fee that you would pay, um, your paycheck of, of your on, considered on call or on call response status.
That is, that is a deduction from the officer's check.
Correct, yes, fair, yeah. So that's what they do.
I understand, I was wondering why we're, while they're being paid. No, I'm sorry, I, I totally misread that.
So.
Yeah, there's a few different reasons that it provides a benefit to, um, the city and the residents. Um, one of those is, um, I mean, having, having your police, uh, response dispersed so that, you know, if in the event of like, say a tornado hitting one place, your whole fleet's not, uh, wiped out, that you don't have, officers don't have to respond to the station before. I mean, I'll just keep with the tornado theme before, you know, going to, uh, to respond in a, in, in the event of being called in on an emergency basis. But, um, another benefit is just enhanced, uh, police presence in neighborhoods. But that one is in particular for Temple. So that's why those who reside in Temple neighborhoods don't pay the fee and those who reside elsewhere do because that benefit isn't, isn't, um, that they're, uh, it's offset because that's a benefit probably to another community, but they're not paying for this expenditure.
Okay, how often are they on call on average? Uh, and like for detecting that they're on call, double. Four or five times a year, a weekend. Swap teams on call twenty-four, seven, three, sixteen.
There's some positions, yeah, that would be exempt from the fee based on their special duty assignment.
Call.
Even if they live outside the city limits. Um, I think, uh, canine officers are that way as well. There's a few, um, but for the most part, it's, um, just the paid periods, they would be on call, they would be exempt.
All right, very good. Thank you. Anything else for Aaron? Good.
Thank you, Aaron. We are, um, also tomorrow starting meeting for process with the fire association. So we'll talk more about this.
We adopted meeting confer first department. Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, something like that. Yeah. I guess at the time was, was a little bit concerned about that, you know? And, um, but ultimately, I, I really believe it's, it's been a good deal for both ED um, and the city. So, um, this department, I guess, in management, see, so. So it, it's not what we thought it was going to be. It's, um, it's actually been very constructive. So that's good. All right, next is to receive departmental updates from customer care and transform Temple. Spiculous.
Good afternoon. It's been a while since I updated you on our customer care department. Y'all have to excuse me. I sound worse than I feel. Um, in the summer cold or some.
Are you yelling at people without brush?
That's what it is.
Yes, I've lost my voice. So, yeah, I will give you an update on where we are with the implementation of the citywide three-one-one call center. Um, that's gonna be my main focus of the update today and then just a little bit of information about the utility billing office. Um, so if you remember that or to catch you up to speed, in January of twenty twenty-four, we had a vision for this three-one-one customer care call center. Uh, residents shouldn't need to understand the city's form of government to access city information and services. And that is really what we built this off of. People shouldn't have to know that solid waste is under public works. Uh, they shouldn't have to know what department to call if they need a building permit. But it's, it's kind of hard to find different phone numbers, different extensions. So we wanted one place for the community to be able to go to get the services that they need. I can't issue a permit, but I can get you to the people that. Um, so the customer care department was proposed as a centralized solution. Uh, and we built that off of our, our technology was really important. Um, but they're all very important. So the technology, our staffing, uh, the data, how we wanted to capture and receive data, and then our customer experience.
Heather, I don't, I don't think that, that statement that you just made is true, that you can't issue them a permit.
I mean, if it's a roof.
I don't know if Heather's gonna talk about this, probably not, because it's not, uh, the most recent update. But right after the tornado, I called on her and her department's assistants and helped because of the backlog. So she did come in and issue quite a few permits for me.
She over two thousand, uh, residential roof permits in about a month.
Wow.
So she's wrong. She can issue.
Cross training.
Um, so the timeline, uh, February twenty-four, we contracted with Catalyst. Then we're our implementation partner for Salesforce, uh, which is our customer relationship management software. July of twenty-four, we hired our agents, our staff. We have four, uh, full-time agents. And after we hired them until launch, they went on department visited, visits, facility tours. We did some like scavenger hunts so that they could go around town and meet people and see where the things are. When we talk about the pigs in the park, they know exactly what people are talking about. And then they did some side-by-side work at Solid Waste because of the, we knew the volume of calls. That'd be a great place for them to, to listen to how their, um, customer search reps interacted with customers. And then we, um, then they were actually answering phones and helping, uh, Justin snap out. In February of twenty-five, we actually transferred the solid waste phone number to our, uh, two nine eight five thousand, which is our phone number for the city now. Um, and then March eleventh of twenty twenty-five was our official public launch of customer care department and TTX Connect. Uh, so there again is that phone number, two nine eight five thousand. Uh, we do have a mobile app called TTX Connect and then our portal, TTXconnect.com. Uh, and then today, we do, we still have solid waste phones. We also have, uh, the extension fifty-six hundred, which goes to city manager's office and fifty-seven hundred, which goes to city secretary's office forwarded to the call center. Uh, those departments reached out to us because a lot of the calls that they get are, how do I get a permit or how do I get? And so we are building those calls and then we get them to the city manager's office or city secretary's office if that's where they needed to go. Uh, we are currently scheduling all of the bulk and brush, um, requests that are coming in. So that our phone number was what was advertised to request that service. And, uh, we, all maintenance requests were Scott and White, uh, for Scott.
Solid Waste.
I was just talking about insurance. Southwest, the Southwest complex. Yeah, for, uh, solid waste are, um, we were entering those. So somebody's missing a trash can, if their trash can's wheel fell off. We were taking those and then we were also putting them into the solid waste system for them, um, so that their agents didn't have to handle that transaction. Uh, we just this week though gave that back to their staff. So their CSRs are now, um, doing those maintenance requests. But we do vet all miss collection calls. So if somebody possibly says, you missed my trash, we do look at Justin's system to see if there was a reason we missed your trash. And we don't send it to solid waste as a missed collection until we've looked to make sure there wasn't a reason that it wouldn't make up. That's where we are today. Uh, again, that's how you can reach us during business hours. You can call. Now you can text us. Um, we do come in in the mornings and people will text, have text us at night. And we do go back and really want people to do that a lot because it, you know, it takes a lot of time to, to kind of go through those. But, uh, if somebody sends us a text at night, how do I do something or you missed my trash? We can text them back in the morning and get that conversation going. Um, takes a little while to kind of go catch back up. If they were texting with somebody yesterday and then they're trying to catch up on the conversation. So they take a little bit of time, but while we're. But while we're there, uh eight to five Monday through Friday, you can call or text. You will get a live agent that will answer you. Um, and then we also have on every page of the city of Temple website, in the bottom right corner, there is a box that says, how can I help you? And that is a live agent chat. So if you put your name in there and ask a question, you go into the chat queue and as soon as an agent is available, which those go pretty quick, um where they're asking, how can we help? Then we get you answers for what you need. Uh, when we get real busy, I do that. I don't answer the phone, cause that scares me now. But I do uh chat, and I, I enjoy that part, chatting back and forth with people.
So you said during business hours, twenty-four, seven?
Twenty-four, seven is here.
The online.
Sorry, the online.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, during business hours is chat and call texts. Twenty-four, seven is the online portal and the mobile app. So you can submit my trash was missed or um my neighbors had them both there yard.
Well, a brush and bulk pickup has to be a call.
It does, and I'll, I've got uh coming soon. We're, we're working real hard on getting that available online.
Getting what?
The brush and bulk schedule.
Oh, so that, that would be something y'all could do, or that's something that, that the caller can do themselves?
The customer may be able to use that the request. We would still, we would still review it because we require them to have an active utility feeling. We count the paid uh, you know, current on their solid waste charges. Um, make sure they haven't had one in a month, this month, since it's only once per month. So we'll still have to review them. Um, but people will be able to request that and know what week is available um online. So we'll review it, and if nothing's wrong, then it's just on the schedule and it goes.
Well, it have, I know when they're when they're calling, y'all are asking them about policemen and all that kind of stuff, correct? That can be.
Correct. And it'll ask them the questions, but you can click, yeah, 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 and, and go. And I, I do have a little bit of hesitation about having it available for self-service because of that, because I was just talking to Justin, probably if I had to guess the number, I'd say eight percent of everything that we call, that people call us, and we go through all the questions. You know, it can't be mixed. It can't, the limbs have to be this size. About eight percent of everyone we go out to is still either a mixed pile or um, and I can understand if somebody sets a sofa out and then somebody comes and takes it, right? Cause that happens. But we'll go out for brush piles. They called yesterday, we go today, and the brush pile's not there. So we're still sending a truck out and there's nothing there. So I I'm a, I'm a little worried about when it goes to self-service that we'll get more of those, but we'll see. We'll see how it turns out. So right now, we are really, I mean, we're spending time with, we'll go and through the questions. And then we ask them upfront before we even start the request, and then at the end, we read a whole script. Plus, we send them an email with all of the guidelines on it, and we're still having problems.
So you're seeing a, a truck shows up and there's no brush piles because they haven't put it out as instructed?
It's because they, or they, the wife called it in and the husband pulled it off. That's kind of what I see from it. For us.
He may have pulled it off. She may have pulled it off.
She might have.
Or they were worried about not getting a spot and called prospectively and then didn't get around to cutting a limb.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Correct.
Yeah.
Does that count against their their month list?
Yes.
It will.
Okay, it will.
We're educating right now. We're gonna spend a few months saying, we told you to have that out there Monday by seven AM, and it wasn't. We're gonna come back. Just the same. So we're, we're using it as an opportunity to educate people, um but eventually that will have to stop because we can't. And as we, as this builds up and forms what people are doing it, Justin's team won't be able to drive all over looking for the piles that aren't there.
So what is your call pickup rate? Are people coming home?
We do have a full queue. Um, and I'll show you, let me um, in a couple of slides here, I'm gonna show you kind of a peak day and kind of what our calls per hour look like, um show you kind of what's happened over the last few months. Uh, so these numbers that I put up here are from our official launch date, March eleventh through the end of August. So um, not, not a whole year, uh we have handled five thousand nine hundred and two interactions with people. So if you'll see the little gray sliver, two thousand and eighty-four of those have been self-service requests that are submitted. So the other twenty-seven thousand plus interactions have been handled by our agent. And like I said, I have four. Um, I do want to point out though, so I'm, I'm really um proud of this, but hope to improve it, is after, out of all of those twenty-seven thousand eight hundred interactions, only eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight of those resulted in a work order that we sent to a department to do something with. Almost nineteen thousand people we were able to help without creating a work order for a department.
Nice.
That is sixty-three percent. Our goal is eighty. We were at seventy, and then when we started scheduling brushing, well, those are all work orders. So a majority of the, the calls we've taken over the past few weeks has kind of brought that percentage down, but I'm hoping that that'll go back up. But yeah, when you look at how many people we've helped without having to follow the department, I say follow the department, we might have had a call to ask a question, but without having to submit a work order for something for them to do.
And the resident hadn't, hasn't had to try to call five phone numbers, trying to find the right place.
We have to transfer them around.
That's huge.
Just to that.
Pretty efficient.
So yeah, this is just another way to, to show that same information that I just wanted to show that percentage there. Twenty-five thousand of the interact, twenty-five thousand of the twenty-seven thousand interactions have been phone calls. They're busy. That's the team. I'm happy to say we hired them over a year ago and we still have the same staff. So that's big, cause that's a tough job.
Especially through the, the trash and.
People don't call to see if you're having a good day. Although I did have a, a person text. I was helping Tuesday, so it was really busy and she texted, I said, she just wanted us to know that we're doing a great job. So, every now and then you get one.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, but Catherine on the left, she is our customer care manager, and the other four are our agents. So they're, they're doing a great job. It's been a lot to learn and a lot to take on. Um, so with August, uh I wanted to show with the interactions that we had for August, if we did it by average, it's fifty, average by agent. So for the month of August, with the number of transactions, by agent, they handled over fifteen hundred transactions, three hundred and ninety-five every week. It's an average of seventy-nine a day, and then that's ten an hour. So
Wow.
If you look at this day right here, which you'll probably remember what the date before it was, when we went from quarterly to monthly, that was our high peak day for volume of calls. We entered um, we had four hundred and ninety-one transactions. So that's sixteen per hour. That day, I did have our assistant director, our customer care manager, and our board member on the phones too. Uh, but to answer your question, yes, then we do have a queue. I did look up one time, um I don't think it was that day. I think it was last week. And at one point, we did have eleven people on hold in the queue. But you can do uh what's called a queue callback. So you can press an option to say, I'm gonna leave my name, and you, and you hold your place in line, and then whenever an agent becomes available at your time, the phone just reads, and it'll just call you right back. A lot of times, people don't answer when we call back, but, but it does call you back. So just wanted to show those numbers where we are for August. Um this was the request that we took in, we counted on um by entering in the smart sheet. It's kind of clunky right now until we get our scheduler. But for each week, this is a number of um transactions or pickups that we scheduled for Solid Waste. So a little over eighteen hundred for the month of August. Um, weekly average of about four hundred and fifty-nine. We had two days where we had over two hundred. But other than that, it's about eighty, eighty a day, eighty to a hundred a day, average.
Look, you know, for last week.
Yeah, that, well, again, that was the week after the change was made to monthly.
And, and marketing has started their efforts to educate the community, and we're, we're, our staff is gonna meet I think it's next week.
Next week.
We're gonna talk, you just check in on things, see, you know, how things are going, if we need to make any tweaks. But I, I think we do all need to keep in mind that as we place more door hangers, we are going to elicit more calls, because right now, some people may not realize.
Yeah.
You know, if you drive around town, you'll see some piles out that probably people don't even know yet that they need to call. But I, I mean, I've, I've seen that in the newspaper. Um, you know, so they, they started their efforts, but as we continue to roll it out, I think we'll continue to get more, those numbers continue to go up.
And I think the twenty-second, Justin's team also hung door hangers on the north side.
Four hundred fifty. No, this.
Two hundred, first Friday. Last Friday, they hung four hundred and fifty door hangers.
Are you going to all houses?
Thank you.
They're, they're, they're targeting the, the ones that have piles first. We will do all pile, all, all houses as y'all have requested, but we're gonna, we're starting with the ones that we know have a pile and so may not realize they need to call, and we're gonna try to manage it in where, you know, again, we don't blanket the city and overwhelm Heather.
They can't pick up every house in there. So that's, the whole point of this was to manage the, the number of pickup.
I would add that Code just got the flyers this last week, and they're gonna start, I think, next week. As they see piles, they'll check to see if they're scheduled. If they're not, they're gonna start hitting.
Your staff's suing it.
My Code guys will start next.
I, I got one. The lady had put out some brush and was planning on putting more and then calling. And because she had a brush pile, she got the tag and was upset, but after I told her that we were, we had instructed staff to do that with the brush piles for information's sake, so they knew she was yeah, unmad.
Mike, I heard that. That was not us. If over there was, over there.
No, you didn't do anything wrong. That's, that's.
I've had calls from people who said, I saw the brush truck go right by my house. Well, did you call? Well, no, but why would they not pick up my stuff if they were here?
They've had education. You mean, as, as it grows, if we get the schedule more and more full, it'll be routed more efficiently. I, I'll tell you that we are pretty much, except for Thursday and Friday, Thursdays and Fridays, calls that come in go out Monday. Is, or Tuesday, if there's too many. Um, but this week, Tuesday and Wednesday, we were scheduling next day. I was giving them a week range, in case we can't get there. But we were uploading things at four PM, they were picking them up the next day. So as we get more and more in, and the schedule gets more full, they'll be able to route it more. Cause we did, we had a gentleman that put, had a pile out, we picked up his neighbors and not his, and he went, no, why? Well, he had called the schedule. Today, he called, they were picking up what was called yesterday. So yes, should, I mean, I get it.
As we get a week's worth, we'll be able to look at that.
Then you can route it.
And manage and, and just say, we're gonna do this quadrant for the city today, right? So it's more efficient. And we're, we're not there yet with utilization.
And as more people realize they need the schedule, you'll, you will stop having that. Because one of the complaints I still hear about the system is, how can it be more efficient if you're driving past a pile on the street? But it, as, as we all learn that we need to call in, you, we won't be driving by those piles. Everybody will have called in and the street will get picked up together.
Well, well, hopefully, they're calling their neighbor across the street, they didn't, you know, you need to call in.
Yeah.
So that.
Yeah, and the first time you see someone else's pile get picked up and not your own. Uh, but again, we're, we're gonna try to make sure everybody, it'll take a while to get everybody uh educated, cause.
I, I sent you one, I think, last week about on North Seven. Yeah. Okay, thank you. It was just a.
Educated.
Okay, yeah, there were a group of people, they saw somebody pile, and then other people started piling their stuff, and then it became larger and it would be fine for it, and you know, it's like, I kind of got out of hand. But again, that's just part of education.
Yeah.
Yeah, the way we have it right now with the volume of call that we're getting. And, and if you look at the number of work orders versus still the number of calls we take, they're not all scheduling brushing more. So we're still getting a higher volume of calls on other things. Um, but.
Can Heather, I'm gonna brag, we're up the continuity, Kelly, Boa. Um, this process takes them to take the call, put it in the smart sheet, and Kelly and Heather, they worked together, were able to take that information from a smart sheet and put it into router. And then they actually put the information into our software for us. And then my guys go and route for me. So thank y'all. Collectively, that was huge for us.
Justin challenged me to learn smart sheet. And I can, I can build reports now.
Is that, is that the most efficient way to do that?
No, it is not.
No, she was, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have said it, but it's been a lot of back.
It's not sold.
It's been behind the scenes work a lot that they've carried.
It's been a very manual process. We actually pulled somebody from the utility business office to handle the input of everything in the smart sheet, because the, the call takers couldn't do it. I couldn't do it. Um, managers and, and assistant directors have been on the phone. So we actually pulled somebody from the utility business office that's helping with that process right now. But hopefully, no, not hopefully, for sure, before the end of this month, we will have online scheduling. Uh, and they'll be able to use the app or the website to request, and it'll also simplify the back office, um the intake for the agents that won't get as many calls, because people will be able to self-serve, and then the process for the back office staff. And the, our um Catalyst, our implementation partner, they, or our wife, like, well, why doesn't, why don't you have Salesforce go into smart sheet? So it can. So we're, we can't integrate with his software, but we're gonna use smart sheet as a middleware and basically integrate with the software. So we've got some really smart people working on that.
When they do it online, they'll need to know their utility account number, right?
Probably not. I mean, we might request it. A lot of people don't know that. They, they still call for that account number. But we can require it, or we can ask for it, but not require it. So if they don't know it, what we're doing in the back office is we look, we're looking it up. Cause you might know your account number, but you also might have a five hundred dollar outstanding balance that needs to be taken care of before.
How many trucks do you have running?
We're slow to roll on this still. We're running four right now. We're still ahead of utilization. So it's like Heather said, they Wednesday, this week they called, we picked them up today. You know, that's where we're at.
Is there ever a thought toward um having, you know, Monday, this quadrant, Tuesday, this, cause in that way, you still have trucks zipping all over town.
If I had seven hundred twenty calls, yes. But we haven't had that yet.
Okay.
Over the month, we had eighteen. So, you know, uh, we haven't had enough every week to do that yet. That makes sense.
I had to say it, she could take trucks out. Right? And do, you know.
So we're running four. We're running four, not eight. I, I should be running eight.
Okay, that's a good point. Yeah. Good for you.
Yeah.
All right. That's good.
So we're working hard on that. Um, they're supposed to have us approve the concept next week, so we'll have something to look at and can go back and forth with them. But I feel really confident in the project team that they put on this, that it's gonna be.
And how, how, how many daily pickups are possible with four trucks? Each truck can do what, eighty?
Sixty. We're, we are scheduling right now based on three trucks for four days a week.
Okay.
So that's seven hundred and twenty.
Seven twenty.
So right now, we have availability to do seven hundred and twenty a week, and that's where we got last week. So we were, we were watching on uh Friday to see if we were gonna hit the lead. But he does have a fourth truck, so it kind of spreads it out. But we're still being conservative, because if we say we're gonna pick it up,
Yeah.
we're gonna pick it up.
And illegal dumping. Are we?
We get a lot of calls for it.
Yeah, no, I know. I know. Bob Brennan.
Illegal dumpers, you usually don't call this guy.
I know.
I know.
I mentioned that uh with Nancy's team earlier this week on some illegal dumping issues, MPD. Try to figure out a better system to, to work through those. It's difficult if you don't have identification on a pile. Uh, if there is ID, we go after them. And in fact, we had one uh that was kind of a big deal um that, that got prosecuted, I guess arrested in about last week. Um, so uh we're, we're trying to find a quicker way to address it, so it's still difficult to so if we can't catch him, we just go pick it up. That's. And Mayor, just so you know, we're, we're, my trucks are doing that on Fridays. Like, like if there's illegal dumping, we notified it, and Bufer's team's gone through it, and we, you know, been notified, we, we try to reserve that for July. We wanna make sure this works first.
Yeah, no, that's great. Uh we had a guy, Jessica and I interacted with a resident that I think that, you know, someone's dumping like maybe down at a park entrance or something, in his neighborhood, hasn't been caught. And so how, if illegal dumping occurs, they just need to call, use three-one-one, just regular process and hey, you know, this isn't my address, but it's down by the park entrance, and it'll be scheduled and picked up on Fridays.
Yeah, Bufer and I will fight over it.
We can do this.
If it's small. I know, and they do get off.
If it's small, if it's a pickup, we'll go grab it if we can. If it's too big, then we'll get what we can and call Justin's team for it.
Yeah.
I made one pick it up, pick their stuff up the other days.
I didn't tell him, I said, I, I am somebody that can make something happen and took a picture of his license plate. He jumped off, started picking it up.
Um, and just a few more things here, I know this is hard to see, but now that we're getting in our group, we're really starting to look at the data part of this. And what we can capture, so again, this is just what we're tracking, we're trying to start telling our story and and watching that growth and seeing what happens. And see if there's ups and downs. Um, but this is our origin of interaction, so again, phone chat, S M S. Um, and then the web, so that we can see what percentage that is. Um, this is an easier way to see that, so you can see what has happened with the phone calls over the months. And then chat, um, text didn't get launched until May, but if you look at July, it kind of peaked up. It's, it was down for August, I think, because of the calling.
The only thing, Ms. Myers, I talked about, I don't know, six weeks or so ago, was celebrating our wins. And I think data like this, I think we need to have marketing put together something. And put out all the, so you'll put it out there that, listen, we have tax increase. But but what we said, once we got the equipment, we said we could fix it, and now we're fixing it. And here are, here is what's working. We went from quarterly to be safe, now we went to monthly, and it's working. We need to get that stuff out there.
I would agree.
Otherwise, you're just, you know, people get to keep lobbing shots at you and you never react to it. Fight back professionally nicely.
We had, one of my agents yesterday uh texted, she said, I just wanted to let, you know, this lady called and said, thank you so much. Every time I call, you're so nice. And you said great customer service, and said, can you call her back and ask her to put that on? That, that's not the stuff that you see is the one telling us.
Well, your folks ought to document that and say, we're gonna post this somewhere. Yeah, I mean, I do. Do it five back nicely.
They're doing the best they can. So, real quick, I'll just run through these, I know Buford needs at least thirty minutes. Um, monthly departmental reports, so these are things we're gonna start doing for the departments, um, going again to that data. The the number of requests by Titan, so how many did you get for tall grass, how many illegal dumping called in, we'll be able to send those to the departments. General inquiries by the departments, what are people calling about for your department that we were able to answer in that first call resolution? And then open request aging, so the number of requests that you have that are past your service level agreement. If you told us something should take three days and it's been a hundred days, then probably something we need to look at. Either we need to change the expectation or change the process. So this is, these are some examples. Um, this is from Buford's team from August, so we sent Buford a hundred and one work orders. And those are the different types that we sent, tall grass, of course, this time of year being. Um, the number one, and then, how many eight illegal dumping? Uh, junk and debris, and a lot of those two people report self-service junk and debris, and that'll be the brush and bulk that people have stuck out that they have examples. Sometimes we get them in as one thing and we kind of have to reroute those. General inquiries uh by department, and that was kind of hard to see, so I I pulled out just a little piece here. I was talking to Brian Chandler earlier about how their call volume has been, and so if somebody called and wants to know, um. What's the website that I apply for a permit? Well, we type in permit, it pulls up a knowledge article, we can copy that. If it's in a text or a chat, we can copy and paste it, send it to them, they can link right to it. Um, but these, that's what that is counted as, by the knowledge article that we used when we took that call. So, the departments will get these, so they can see what people are calling about. And then I've got some old data. Don't get mad at me. Some old data that we're still working on cleaning up, that is why I use this for an example, because we're not monitoring service level agreements right now. These things have been taken care of, the work orders just haven't been closed, and we're working with Justin's team to get that done. But let's say they, they really hadn't been done, that I can send Justin a report that says, hey, on April twenty third. Somebody called in, we told them three days and it's been a hundred and thirty days. So those would be things, if it was a still open work order, that we would be able to show them. But this is, this is just for.
Thank you for saying that's not true.
Not true. Uh, and then quarterly departmental reviews, our team is going to meet with our department liaisons quarterly. To talk about the service request types, is there are things we need to add, change, we need to ask different questions, we need to not ask this question. Um, knowledge articles, reviewing everything that we have out there for your team, uh, we do have the ability, I was telling them, our clean team. Uh, like for tables, that we can put a, a article out there that people can search and find, my staff included, that after the event's over, it'll expire and. People can't find it anymore. So at, like, if the dumpster drops, we talked about doing that, so that people can find the date, so that was easier. And then, uh, are the right people getting the right things, are the people in your department that need to get it in? Um, and then real quick, utility business office, uh, still trucking along. Uh, this is for the whole fiscal year today, so October through August. We processed almost sixty five hundred new utility accounts, which is about a hundred and forty a week. Uh, three hundred and eighty three thousand payments posted, which is about eighty one hundred payments a week. And then I, my, our phone data for U V O only goes back two months at a time. So I couldn't go all the way back to October to get the exact number, but I used the past few months. Um, and then did some assumptions and we're right at about fifty thousand.
On that, hundred and forty a week, that's, that's uh, we just knew that it's changed.
Correct. So if somebody moves from house A to house B, we handle the same way as if the house was built from the ground up. The, our process is the same. Uh, we did with the, the call center implementation, we put three seats upstairs in the call center that are U V O only. So the call center agents can answer basic things about utility billing, like they can get on a, where to pay, make the payment, they can get on their. Um, account number, but they don't get down in the weeds of why is my bill so high? Um, so they can transfer them over to these agents, but the, the phone rings there first. And if it doesn't get answered by the call center in uh utility business office, then it goes down to the lobby. But we left, tried to leave the phones off the lobby so they could help the people face to face without the phone ringing. Which is what has been the deal for twenty years, and it's, it's pretty distracting.
Anyway, as we win, I don't have anything else. That's all great news. Congratulations to all.
Do you have any to have the, some of the questions, the, the, what, just staff some of the?
Oh, the things that people that are, um, you turned on my cold water, but not the hot water. The most, the most, the best, I mean, the one we did every day, somebody stole my trash can.
Where does Mayor Davis live?
Asking about what he dumped in the landfill, alluding to, he was a crime, crime scene specialist, and he cleaned up, and he might have some things he needed to dispose of. Then he called back and said, I just have old food. Just kidding. What were some of the other ones? I had a whole list of them that I showed in our department meeting that were. Um, quite entertaining.
I do appreciate you guys not giving out my home address to that guy.
Oh, yes, we did, actually, right, have.
You did give it to him?
I told him to Google it. He wanted, uh, he was being really ugly, and so he got to the customer care manager, Catherine, he took him. Did you see the chat? Transcript, so, um, she handled it very, very well, but he wanted to know where he lived.
Is he your guy?
He, he got a little bit of all of us.
And I was kidding, I said, maybe that was the guy that we had, but.
Well, so I, I emailed him. Um, and then he, he, yes, you need to, you know, if you got these complaints, you're welcome to. Um, you know, kind of get on the agenda, he's like, I need six to eight hours.
I did say.
Well, in three man increments, that's like, yeah.
He pushed me about as far as you could, and I came that close to telling him, he just needs to run city council. Next May.
Unopposed, unopposed.
Oh, I asked the same gentleman, um, he was complaining about puddles, and I said, if you can give me the location. I will be more than happy to send our street department out to go take care of that, and he ghosted me after that, so. I think he just wanted to blow off a little steam.
We had a guy last year in Buford helped me, Buford grew up next as soon as we finished these stories. Had a guy last year that that was complaining, I know, I know him like, you know, professionally, and he was complaining about these shingles, shingles on the road. And, um, so I called Buford about three times and finally, um, and I said, the guy's name's Robert. I said, Robert, you're gonna have to be more help, cause we've sent a crew by there three times, and you're saying they're still there. And my guys say that there are no shingles on the road. Turns out that the shingles. To the road.
Yeah, they just worked it.
People run over me, it was hot.
Oh, my goodness.
And, um, and Buford's like, there's these two that are melted, we can't get them up. That's why I said, stand back, said, dude, you got you. You know, sometimes this, this happens. Or heaven forbid, keep tripping out of your own car. Right? I did that yesterday, early this morning, somebody just thrown their McDonald's sack out, I'm like.
Litter.
All right, well, I've got ninety seven slides and a bunch of charts.
Well, that's all fine, you also have eighteen minutes.
And Mayor, remember, we also have to walk back to council chambers, so.
Buford, we're pushing you next.
We're sure aren't meeting then.
Ninety seven slides, you deserve it.
Okay, that's who we are, you all seen that before? Uh, our projects team, um, I, I threw in some of last year's numbers, I'm sorry, this is from. October through the, so this is the first nine months, so that'd be the end of June, these numbers that you're looking at are for nine months. We did nineteen boardups, we do banners, uh, customer recruitment, a lot of this may be for you, just so. I don't know if you're aware of all the things we do, I think everybody else that's seen that, hear me talk about it. Uh, infill program, we have five applications, four of them are working right now. Uh, sign abatement, those are those yellow signs that y'all see, we buy houses and similar, sign signs. Uh, we've picked up eighteen of eighteen hundred and fifty five of those in the last nine months. Uh, and our, our understanding on that and our belief is that if you get them quick, it doesn't, they pity people, put them out there, buck a pop or whatever. So if we can get them down the same day that they go up, then it really disincentivizes people to to put them up at all.
I'll go back to the birds. I don't know if you've seen that file, but Mr. Hawk or Mr.?
The hawk guy.
Yeah, the hawk.
We have hawk, uh, we've contracted with a guy who has hogs. Um, and, uh, we pay him each year to come downtown and chase off the ground. Now he comes three times, Chad, it's not you, but three more times.
How bad that used to be.
He shot off a cannon, yeah.
Think that I prohibited a cannon. I am just really fascinated with falconeering and the. The use of falcons and hawks and birds of prey in grackle and nuisance bird control. Uh, I've been advocating for that for a long time. I don't think I. I just said it would be cooler if.
Our tool library, which we're really proud of, has grown, uh, by the way, we mailed a flyer with our high grass notifications, that's, uh. I don't know who that is, but, uh, cleaning off some of the, the, uh, tool library. Tools, uh, these are all numbers, these have grown over time, so sixty three transactions means. Individual tools that were checked out, uh, over, over time, and then ten new patrons, we're really building up those patrons, almost four hundred. I put this together some time ago, so like, wouldn't shock me at all, cause that was four hundred. The tool library, we're very proud of, as I said, also, it's great for coding. So when we roll up and say, hey, your grass is high, and they're like, oh, man, my lawnmower broke. We'll say, we'll say, well, all you have to do is give us a call, we'll loan you a, a lawnmower.
So a, a patron is an individual user?
That's correct.
And while I told Buford he could get a cannon, Buford told me that I could not get anything useful to myself in the tool. Log splitter, no.
We're one of the big tools, and I'm scared to give.
How many times do you need a logs? But how, we could share one as a community.
Chad went out and tried one the last time.
Mark, please. Afraid I'm gonna cut my hand off.
So here's our, uh, last three years, year to year comparison of overall checkouts. Uh, I don't know what happened last, uh, in May, but it really blew hot, which is great, uh, this year, but, um. So our numbers have steadily grown up and, and, you know, pretty consistently high. Uh, we spent a lot of time working on tools, fixing tools, and I think we've had two, maybe three times that we didn't get the tools back. And of, of those two or three times, it was, somebody left them out just for a minute, went in the house, and they got ripped off. Well, that happens to city employees, it happens to all of us. So, we're really getting a return on our investment, in, in my opinion, and we appreciate y'all's support of this. There's new patrons, uh, the biggest boost was in June. Also want to be clear, we do, we're maxed out. So we are not putting out there that we do this, most of this is word of mouth, um, until we get a place, a home for this. Um, we, we don't really have room for more equipment, although we're, we're in some. But it takes up too much staff time until we have a location where we can just focus on, so we're working on that. Our dumpster drops, if you're not aware, monthly during the summer and twice a month during winter, uh, we drop a roll-off. Uh, and a trailer for tires, um. So far, in those nine months, we picked up almost forty four tons of garbage from those roll-offs. And seven hundred and fifty tires, which we assume would be in a garage or in a backyard or wherever, collecting water and breeding mosquitoes.
And we have a dumpster drop coming up, though.
My, every month, so.
I, I saw the newsletter that came the other day, and I was looking for locations, and I didn't see that, did I miss that?
I don't know what's in the newsletter.
But, but it came out this week.
There is a, the, if you type in dumpster drop, uh, drop. On the city website, it will take you there, there's a little map of the actual days, and then Heather just said earlier that we're trying to kind of get the. What do you call it, information, information article or?
Knowledge article.
There's, on her system, so people can call and talk to them. They may have been calling.
The next one is September nineteenth through the twenty second, and it's in the central district, it's on Twenty Seventh Street at the old. Fred, um. Edwards Academy.
But we moved them around, so we get all.
It's a roll-off.
It is a roll-off, yes.
Yes, we had one, I think in the fall, in the historic district, I think it was full by noon.
On Friday.
Yeah, it was, it was quick, it was quick.
Like, we dropped it Thursday night or Friday morning, and it was full, and I don't know that we were able to get out there, pick it up and bring one back, but we tried.
Still, though, my, my point to that is it was very popular.
People like it. Clean up, just miscellaneous trash. Uh, this is our projects team, teams and our, uh, mode crew on their down pine, we even went raining for too cold, and there's not a lot of high grass. Which hadn't been recently, hundred and seven, almost a hundred and eight tons of trash, that's a canyon trash picked up. Uh, abandoned homeless camps, sixty five camps, with a little over twenty five tons of trash picked up in those. Neighborhood events, uh, that's working with Nancy's team, so if somebody has got some kind of neighborhood event. Uh, for, almost forty four times, and then just miscellaneous stuff, they see as you're driving around, almost thirty nine tons. Also, we assisted solid waste with bore pickup, and was that July, June, July, anyway, that's last month. Me, that is, our guys over on the left, they were picking up, helping with bulk, so we, they gave us a street or an area, we went out there and picked up everyone.
We didn't have the equipment, what else was supposed to do?
Bryn told me do whatever they gotta do, so we sent guys out there with gloves and. Picked it up and hauled it off. And if you recall, at that time, nobody cared. They did not want to hear any excuses, it was horrible. So we did. Justin said we need help. I said, I have high grass, Bryn said, I don't care what you got, go help Justin, and I said, yes. Infill program, which, uh, y'all are either aware of, or I can fill you in later or send you information. Basically, it's P waivers for, uh, new construction or, or fix up on infill blocks. Uh, four is a low number, uh, we had a bunch of them, and then that's kind of going up, but then Aaron has a program now that's. A little different that is also addressing some infill, so that, that may be where some of this is. Abatement, over almost thirteen hundred cases written up. We mowed, uh, city properties four hundred fifty seven times, so y'all can read numbers just as easily as I can. Call them out, a bunch of most, and a bunch more to do. So we're still steady working on. Chad and I are trying to get in and help organize our team a little better and, and. Uh, roll them out better, but it's still a lot of high grass. Abatement, I've already talked about some of these numbers, tires. Abatement, I've already talked about some of these numbers, tires, seven hundred and fifty from events and eight hundred and thirty-nine. And then, uh, eighteen hundred and fifty-five of those. You can have, you can have them all, Mike, I'll, I'll bring them by the truckload. Here's numbers, which y'all. These are charts, but they're not very fascinating, just a bunch of cases. We're standing right around. Uh, demos, this was a little green, uh, storage, uh, I think there was a resale lot there right across the PD. We tore that down. Uh, and then three eleven central, which is that liquor store, and then I think they got a Lucky Seven thing in there too, who knows what all was in there. Tore it down. Uh, code compliance, uh, some time ago, we started using. Info from the, you know, UVO utility business office, when water would shut off, we'd go out. And then, uh, try to red tag the houses before new people got in there, especially these substandard houses. Uh, and we've sent five hundred and sixty plus, uh, complaints, which are, work out to be citations to our municipal court. Oh, that was that house, actually, it's right up the street from my house, um, and, uh, that is that lot some time ago. I guess Chad or his guys went out there with grass seed, so the dirt wouldn't wash off, and we, we, it's got a pretty nice, pretty nice little wall in there.
That lady was in the home. Isn't that right? Fire had to get her out.
I think she was for that, or, or, PD went, maybe it was fire.
Yeah, the whole house just. She looked, it slipped, it slipped off, uh, gears and. Holding.
So your posts just don't do the job. I liked building against standards when that lady came forward. That was her home, I mean, that was, she was crushed, it's a better, it's gonna be. It was just sad, just sad.
Yes, it is sad. But the damage was done a long time before that.
Oh, yeah, once we talk about your council, right, you gotta paint your house.
Yeah, you were spot on, I was like, amen. Uh, cases started, almost thirty-three hundred. And then registered letters sent, which are generally property vi- uh, violations or junk vehicle violations, a hundred and forty-nine of those. Um, that, that statute tells us we have to send a registered letter for some. You know, John parking, we're getting closer, and I know everybody's sick of hearing that, but we are closer, we finally finalized, uh, with the help from finance. And, uh, legal finally finalize, finalize, uh, some of the contracts. And we're right close to finalizing some of the other ones, got a new parking manager, he's already been working downtown, making people angry, so good for him. Uh, and I, I think we're, uh, we're on the right track and we're working through it. Uh, that's what we're doing moving forward, I can get into that. There, here's the long short of, hourly street parking, we're suggesting two hours, we'll have EV stations. Uh, garage and street permitted parking for businesses and, uh, residents for downtown, and then, uh, metered street parking. Moving forward in our department, really focusing on, uh, management training. Um, some tool library location plan, which I was speaking about earlier. Uh, I'd like a home for the tool library, but we're a little ways away from that. Uh, we're, we do not have a home right now for my entire department, we've got some people in city hall, we've got some people in Jeff Hamilton building. I'm officing here, got a desk in city hall, and I've got a desk at Jeff Hamilton, it's just where I need to be on that day. Um, so, uh, I'm looking forward to getting everybody back into one building, y'all spent a lot of money on the historic post office, we appreciate that, we're looking forward to it.
We're the grateful dead station, then.
That's just what we listened, when, when I say we, I mean, I mean, staff, listen to the grateful dead. Um, what else? Uh, finalization of parking fees, I spoke about that, revised business plan info, so that's. Mostly has to do with budget, but, uh, there's some shifts around we need to do with, with staff and, and just kind of how we're gonna fit all the pieces together. And then revised KPI reporting, that's a list of, a partial list of the. The key performance indicators, which runs all the way from how many tools we checked out, how many new patrons. Um, we don't publish all of this, but I want to be more. Um, intentional about the information we share with the public, I want to start sharing stuff that means something to them. And not just something that means something to me, I, I know what I'm looking for, but the public looks for different. Um, so we're meeting with, uh, Wilson, I think, next week, uh, with Stacy's team. Uh, and we're gonna kind of go through this with my team and figure out what, what are the numbers, and do we need to add numbers, or do we need to not be tracking some of this? Hey, that's it.
Well, it kind of like I told Heather, right, let's figure out a way to advertise our wins. So I don't know if we need to do something deliberate with. Marketing communication, you know, where it becomes, you, you highlight. You know, one, one department a month or something like that, but I think that would make eight hundred of it.
My concern about some of that stuff is like, and tell them, tell the public, and I guess I can right now, we're still all on. How many lot by mode? By mode, my team mode. And I'm, every time I say it, they're gonna say, well, you didn't get this one, but you're right.
You know, that's the old story about the starfish on the shore, right, you throw back, you know. If you have a million starfish on the shore and you throw three back into the, that's three more.
That's right, I, that's what we've got here.
Cut it to pieces when you got eight.
There you go.
Thank y'all very much, we appreciate your support. The, the team is doing great work, and I, I'm lucky to be working here and with it, so thank you all.
Yeah, no, thank you, y'all do great work. I'll do great work. It is two minutes till five, let's kind of start at ten now.